Thank you, Ralph.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us, whether here in the council room or by the Zoom meeting. We're glad you're with us. I'd like to begin this meeting, as we always do, by standing up for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Brad Hens.
Here.
Sean Rooster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
All right. You have the agenda before you. I think I motion approve that, please.
So moved.
Support?
Any discussion? All right, roll call then, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hens.
Hi.
Rooster.
Hi.
All right. Moving on then to our public forum. I have a couple of things I would like to read, and then if there's anyone here present that would like to speak, we'll ask you to come forward to the podium. You are limited to four minutes. I will keep track of that time. We ask that you be concise in that time. If you're addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item that you are speaking about, and if you are speaking on more than one agenda item, arrange your comments in chronological order. Direct comments to the entire council, not to the individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered during this time. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner, and if you are the presenter on an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. So with that, I'm going to read a couple of thank you's before I forget. The first one is from Cindy Runger, Chairman of the Relay for Life here in Sheldon. And she addresses Sam, Mayor Gill's, Police, Fire, EMA, SCAT, and Park Board. Thank you for your in-kind sponsorship to the Relay for Life event. The committee appreciated all of the help given by each department to make our event in the park and Survivor Parade successful. We raised $17,032 at the event. Thank you, Cindy Runger. And the other one is from the residents and staff at House 358 of Village Northwest. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for your service. Our community would not be the same without you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice to hear. All right, so is there anyone here now that has any public comments that they would like to make? Please raise your hand. Not seeing any hands. Anybody joining us by Zoom that would like to speak to anything on the agenda at this time? All right. Yes. Oh, okay. Angie, you're here. If you would, come forward. The microphone is there by State your name for the record, and then share with us what you want to say. Pull the microphone down by your mouse so I can hear it better. There you go.
Hi, my name is Angie, and I'm requesting chickens to 629 Third Avenue. And I went a couple weeks ago to go get signatures from the neighbors, and they all approved. When I went, I asked, like, I told them that we had all the roosters gone, and they didn't have to worry about that, and how that the roosters had been sent to another location, and they're smaller, and it's not going to be as noisy. And we've had the chickens for a couple months, and I'm sorry because I didn't know we were supposed to get permission for that. So I didn't know until somebody called and complained about them. But we went around and got everybody's signature, and they all approved, so I don't really know who would have objected. So, and now I'm asking if I could keep them.
Okay. All right. Anything else you'd like to share now?
No.
Okay. We do have that on our agenda down the road, so I would just ask that you, if you'd just take your seat, and then it's coming up for discussion on our new business.
Oh, yeah.
And if we have questions for you at that time, we would address them then, okay?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. I'm going to assume then that there are no more public comments, so let's move on then to approval of the consent agenda.
Can we have Item C set aside for discussion?
We certainly can.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item C.
Just a question on minutes. Should there not be minutes for the special meeting on the ninth? This as well? We had a special council meeting on 9/9.
Yes, there should have been. Yes.
Okay. So I don't know, can we approve them later?
Yeah, because I don't know if you noticed it, with the minutes of the 9/2 meeting are on this one today.
Yeah, I was going to make my next one.
Because they weren't on the last agenda, so we're...
So should we push those both to the next meeting for approval?
Well, we have them now. I mean, they're on the...
Just approve these ones, and then we can add that one to the next one.
Yeah, if we add it to the next agenda, that'd be fine.
We'll just, those special meeting will be on the next meeting, and I'll cover them, just like we're doing today, basically. So, all right, so then...
Got a motion waiting for a second.
Okay, yes, thank you.
So I'll second that.
All right, so we are approving the agenda, consent agenda items minus...
Item C.
Minus Item C, which is, it'll be a separate discussion following this vote. So we'll take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Rooster.
Hi.
Hens.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
All right, then moving on to Item C. Open discussion for that.
Do you want to motion first, or you want to discuss?
No, just go for it.
Ah, I'm a little concerned about downtown trick-or-treating, because it is a large gathering. The numbers are trending in the wrong direction, and my biggest concern would be not only the community, but the school itself. They're having a lot of hassle and headache fighting through this. And even though I think masks and hand sanitizer and washing hands are good tools, I think the best weapon we have to fight this virus is social distancing. So at this time, I'm torn, but leaning towards the, that I would rather see no downtown trick-or-treating.
If you limit it to downtown, then you might as well do the whole town.
You can social...
Because that's no different than if I take a piece of candy out of my bowl in front of the hardware store and put it in their bag, then go home when I have 10 kids in line and put one in each bag.
I think the social distancing would be better.
The group, the group keeps moving through downtown. The group keeps moving. They're not in one place more than a minute or two.
And...
Well, these groups exist at school, right? You know, it's gathering of children. The only difference being, you know, you'd probably have some other schools involved. But I think if you follow the same guidelines that the schools are doing, if it's good enough for the schools, I think we can, we can use that as guidance for, for how the trick-or-treating goes. You know, and that being the, when the, no, when you don't have the ability to socially distance, that you are mandated to wear a mask. If I remember right, I think right now, it's just that it's recommended. I don't think that there's anything in here that says that, that it's a must or anything like that. Just going through it now. As convinced as, recommending masks.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the memorandum supplied to us by the SDC, and they've talked about shortening the amount of time that normally this event takes. Also noting that the considerations of being less than 15 minutes of contact is at play in this, and the fact that it's outdoors, and if people are able to take their treat on their own. These are the recommendations of masks as well, which is the CDC guidelines that you mentioned, Wayne. Yeah, I think all of these issues have been considered in this, Sean. And, and as a whole, I don't disagree that social distancing is probably the best option in this case. I think they've cooked it into what they're proposing. So at this time, I'm fairly comfortable with what they're proposing. If this was an indoor event, I would be at toe with you.
And it's not, and it's not that it's compulsory, you know? It's not school.
Right.
It's, it can be...
It's elective.
Yeah, it's elective. So I mean, at some point, you know, the parents have to make the decisions for their children. You know, if they don't feel that this is a safe area for exposure, then...
Yeah. I know that we're going to have our treats out in front of our, for Halloween. So if you want to be the first kid to come to my house, because then you can get all the treats, because we're not going to hand them out. So, but they'll be able to pick them as they want. So, that's my...
I make the motion to approve the request from the SDC.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hens.
Hi.
Rooster.
No.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
All right. Moving on then. No old business to deal with today, so we're going to move on to Item 6A, the East Lawn Cemetery Farm Lease. Do you want to speak to that, Sam, or is that pretty straightforward?
It's pretty straightforward. Have any questions?
This is just an extension of the lease we've had with Sean for several years.
So the, if I might, Mr. Mayor, so the Iowa code says that if you have a lease that's longer than three years, it's subject to a public hearing. What we've had is a lease, a lease that was a three-year lease originally, that's been extended several times. And so city attorney recommendation is that this be subject to a hearing. The tenant has been a very good tenant, Shane Coinwalterink, and he desires to plant alfalfa and is asking for a four-year lease, so it is subject to a, a public hearing. It's the same price as before.
And that hearing we have scheduled for two weeks from now, is that right?
This is the hearing.
Oh, this is the hearing. Okay, I thought we were going to schedule one. All right.
I make the motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Rooster.
Hi.
Hens.
Hi.
Motion carries. Have we had any comments verbal or written in the city office?
Have not.
And no one here wants to speak to this today? Am I assuming that correctly?
There's a visitor on Zoom that's requested for everybody to speak louder, somebody that's listening on Zoom. I just got a text from Kurt.
Okay.
Somebody asking that everybody can speak up.
Include me. Sorry.
The masks don't help.
Yeah.
All right. If there are no comments...
Maybe we could ask Kurt Strauss if there's anybody that could open up the lines real quick.
All right. Kurt, did you hear that? Is there anyone online that would like to chime in on this? Kurt, can you respond if you hear me, please?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
I hear you now, yes.
Okay. So we're actually having a hard time hearing a lot of the city council members speak. There's a panelist, or not a panelist, but a visitor on the Zoom that has expressed the same concerns. So I'm not sure if we were able to speak into the mics a little bit louder. And if you could repeat the question, I had a hard time understanding you, Mayor.
Okay. Let me do this way. Are there any, is there anybody online that wants to speak to the point of the East Lawn Cemetery Farm Lease?
I do not know. I do not believe so.
Okay. Given there are no written or verbal comments, then I'd like to close the public hearing. Someone like to make that motion, please?
I'm moved. Do we close the hearing?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Rooster.
Hi.
Hens.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
I make the motion to approve the lease.
Second.
I did.
Me.
And Wayne.
Brad made the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the lease. You have that in your packets. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Hens.
Hi.
Rooster.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
All right, moving on then to Item 6B, the request from Angie regarding the request to keep poultry at 629 Third Avenue. I'd like to open that up for discussion. Angie has made her request here publicly. Sam has spoken to it. His recommendations in, in our agendas as well. Anybody have any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I, if I, if I could ask Angie a brief clarification, if that's okay?
Yep.
So earlier, Angie, you talked about chickens. Is it also your desire to have four or five ducks?
No, we're trying to look somewhere.
Okay, mind stepping up to the microphone for the benefit of the...
So, yeah, we have four ducks, and we're trying to look somewhere right now to try to find a place so they're, because they're kind of noisy sometimes when, like, they see people. And, but that's only when they see people. But, yeah, we are trying to look for a farm. We haven't found one yet. But at least by winter, we're trying to get, like, at least two of them out by then.
Okay. So just let me follow up, if I may, Angie. So is it your intent to get rid of all the ducks in the end?
I'm trying to, because that's what I'm trying to, like, because they are kind of noisy when, like, they see people. They start, like, swacking. So I'm trying to, like, not get people, like, the neighbors, to get, like, mad. So I'm trying to, at least, maybe, maybe just, like, keeping one or two if I can't find farm for all of us.
Sure.
But at least trying to, like, get two on a farm.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any more questions for Angie, or any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Sam, so where are we, just in general, in regards to the planning and zoning? You know, we've kind of gone back and forth between, you know, making it a city council issue versus a planning and zoning commission issue. Where do we stand with that right now?
Okay, so what's been discussed, Wayne, is, is right now, it's in the purview of planning and zoning to consider ordinance amendments that would create, make this a special exception so they could go to the Board of Adjustment. So right now, you have, you have two boards potentially involved. You have the City Council and the Board of Adjustment. Because currently, you have the zoning code, and then the exception to the zoning code, which is in your city code. The P and Z is only involved in, in this to the extent of amending the code, because any zoning code amendment must go through the planning and zoning. So I have a draft that I plan on presenting to the Planning Commission on October 28. I just received it back from Northwest Planning and Spencer, and we're in the process of reviewing it. But that particular code would then make this, these requests ultimately subject to a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. And that ordinance would then come back to you for consideration prior to implementation. The other option is to, is to have a, a simple, I put "simple" in quotation marks, permit that would be issued by the zoning administrator, which is me, then could be appealed to the Board of Adjustment.
Well, I think that this should be something that we, you know, we've talked about putting the infrastructure in for handling these requests with the Board of Adjustment. I think I would like to see this request be the, the beginning of that. So it would be me able to table the request until we have the zoning ordinance updated, and then we can go through the Board of Adjustment that way.
So mine then is a legal legality of it. If we table it, she keeps, she can keep the fowl until we address it?
That would be my, that would be my desire as to how I would use my discretion as zoning administrator, yes, would be to leave the issue alone until it can be addressed by the, the Board of Adjustment. If you're in support of that, then I'm okay with that, too. We just need to, it's important to go into this eyes wide open and know that if we're asking her to go to the Board of Adjustment, ultimately, you know, there's a, there's a cost to the Board of Adjustment. And in the code, a special exception or a variance, this would be a special exception, it's $125 to go to the Board of Adjustment, plus the permit cost. Just so you're, just so you're aware of, aware of that.
I have a question. If you say you can approve the chickens on this request, then why have we gotten the other chickens involved?
I didn't say I could, would approve it.
You said the zoning administrator could approve the chickens.
Not what I said. I said if you, if you...
That's one of the options.
If you change, if one of the options is to change the ordinance...
But then, okay, I misunderstood you.
Yeah, there was...
Because you got to change the ordinance before it can go to, so this one, we'd have to decide tonight, or she's going to be in limbo for the next three months.
But I think I, what I think you misunderstood, Brad, is what I said is, is that it's, my preference would be that it allowed to be in limbo until it's resolved unless you're asking, unless, unless you're asking me to have her remove the chickens.
Okay. I misunderstood Wayne's question, because I thought he asked of how we would handle this case currently.
Well, I guess, my, and what I was looking to do was to make this the first case that is handled.
Under the new ordinance.
Yes, yes.
You're basically deferring it to the new.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I misunderstood.
And she, she admitted that she's had poultry for the past couple months, correct, Angie, about the knowledge of having to go through...
But there's a lot of other people in town that have chickens.
Right, yeah.
So she's not the only one that's got chickens right now.
Right. So...
I make the motion we deny the request.
Is there support for that? Mike, did you have a comment?
I was asking for clarification, so you had a heavy motion, too.
No, I didn't act, I don't think I actually, I just said that that would be my vote. I didn't formally issue that as a, as a motion.
Until we can get this zoning and ordinances all cleaned up, I think we just have to say no. Because I think we have a open chicken coop running wild right now. And I said that in the beginning, this was going to create some havoc and headache for us.
Well, why not have, let the appropriate zoning ordinances be in place? And that way, it's not a reflection of, you know, just the whim of a council. It's, it's the, the actual laws of the land that we would be adhering to.
Let's get those fixed, and then start worrying about the chickens. Because now she's going to be in limbo until we get the ordinances fixed. And that's not a simple, that's going to be a three reading. So there you have a month and a half, two months.
So Brad, with your motion, what is your intent for her current situation?
Deny request, and she has to remove the chickens, because chickens are not allowed in town unless approved by the council.
So what I'm hearing is we have two, two options here that both end up doing the same thing, except for the fact that one's going to force her to get rid of the poultry while we're putting together the new format for this. Which I personally think's a little heavy for her to have to bear that.
I understand that, but it's bad timing.
When in the end, Brad, we'll have something that takes care of the issues that you're talking about, as well as what we want to do from a city perspective, so...
I don't, I don't want to punish, you know...
No, I don't either.
You said that, yeah, there's a number of people in town that have them, which I have seen them. I agree with that.
Yeah.
I don't want to punish the person who's trying to go about it the right way by...
We need to enforce the ordinances that we have and go after the other ones that are not abiding by the ordinance.
And I don't, I don't argue that.
But with the ordinances we have, there is a loophole, as I understand it, a loophole, if you will, that allows them to have it by this, by this process that we've been following.
And we're, we're dealing with it right now, great?
Exactly. We are. But we're not done with it. So I mean, to me, too, it seems a little harsh to be, throw this one out.
Yeah.
When we've allowed it, and maybe we're in limbo already, so...
I mean, based on that, I have a hard time supporting the totality of where you're going with that, even though I agree with, in the end, that we're going to have to deal with it. So, so I can't second your motion.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion, to deny the request? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. So then, what's our next step?
Well, I think, I think it's time for you to put your...
Yeah, so then I'll, I'll put forward the motion that we table the request to allow the Planning and Zoning Commission time to figure out what they're going to do with the, making the correct ordinance that we can, Sam?
Is it okay if I ask her to table, have the motion to be to table the request and allow her to have the birds until the ordinance is in place? Otherwise, the implication is, is that...
Right.
I need to go ask her to remove the birds tomorrow.
All right. I will, I will amend my motion to say table the request and allow Angie to keep the, to keep the, the fowl until the Planning and Zoning Commission has had sufficient time to consider their ordnance amendments and get a firm action step in place.
Do we have support for that motion?
Support.
Any further discussion? A roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hens.
No.
Rooster.
Hi.
The motion carries. All right, moving on then to Item C. The first reading of the ordinance amending the code of ordinance pertaining to urban livestock. Let me bring that up here a minute.
If I might, Mr. Mayor? Yes, Bill. So what this ordinance does is it removes eight words from the city code. It removes "except by written consent of the, of the City Council." I would, I would recommend approving a first reading. I would also recommend do second and third reading, so I wouldn't recommend waiving it. By the time we get to third reading, we'll hopefully have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will note that in your packets, there's the summary from a number of other communities on their codes. There's a number of communities that have the exact same verbiage as we do in ours. They choose not to, they leave the order as, they just choose to not allow the request to come forward to the City Council. So I will tell you that, I'll just speak from personal perspective, what this, under the zoning, under the zoning code... the zoning, under the zoning code, I believe under temporary use, you'd still be allowed, the zoning administrator would still be allowed to, to permit temporary grazing. It's, this, you know, remember years and years ago, our, our family actually had sheep at O'Brien County Implement? And there, there are many towns that allow for sheep and goats, certain places, wilderness areas mainly, to help with, with areas where lawnmowers can't get to. And the topic amongst fellow city managers is, one of them, eastern part of the state, said to me, you know, make sure you make clear to the council that the idea here isn't to stop temporary grazing, because there could be a situation, the pavilion area being an example, maybe you'd want to have some, have some goats out there in, in the future. That's something that can be approved as a temporary use. Another area would be the leaf dump or the tree dump. We wouldn't want to automatically say no to, to that type of.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Any further questions that anybody has, based on what Sam has told us today?
So now this ordinance that we have in front of us, has that been approved by the planning and zoning?
It's been recommended for approval.
Recommended, but not approved?
It's been recommended for approval, you're the ones that have to approve an ordinance.
Okay, so.
But they did pass a motion recommending the approval of it.
So they're in favor of it.
They're in favor of it.
So what does that get us today?
Well, what it means ultimately is if, is if there isn't a change in zoning, then livestock will be allowed only where it's allowed now in the, in the zoning code, which is in agricultural zoning, suburban residential would be, for example, the McCabe addition on the south, on the south end of town, that's, and then limited circumstances in arterial commercial, and that's it.
So residential, commercial?
No, not residential, suburban residential.
But they would not be allowed in residential districts?
They're allowed, no, not in residential, so the three requests that we've had this year, this ordinance gets to third reading, and you pass third reading, and there isn't a change in the zoning code, there will be no more of those requests coming to the city council.
But they will be able to eventually go to planning and zoning for a variance.
If, if, if you amend the zoning code.
Aye.
Which has to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission first.
But, I mean, the only way a resident, residential area could have livestock would be through a variance, in the end.
Aye. That's true, but there is also another option, which is to have, amend your zoning code to allow it by permit, which should be approved by the zoning administrator. That's an option.
But we haven't been presented either one of those options yet, so.
Right.
So we're talking about this hypothetically at this point.
You are.
So I think just for clarity of our own minds, that's what we're trying to work through here a little bit. I'm assuming that's where Sean's trying to figure out.
Well, I want to, what's the advantage of sending it to the Board of Adjustment instead of sending it to the city council?
Well, the advantage of sending it to the Board of Adjustment, you have a, a set public hearing, you have a standard notification process where a letter goes out to all the neighbors within 200, and it's an easier, an easier process in my mind to, to manage.
And the city would get paid for its troubles.
And the city would get paid some for the, for the administrative work that goes into this.
Who wouldn't have to spend the 300 hours we've spent talking about chickens over the last year?
Plus, doesn't that also add in some regulation on what the coop looks like, and where it's located, and height, and all of those zoning type of issues as well, that doesn't get covered here through us?
Well, would it, would you have coop requirements if it was an exception? I mean, because if it's, if it, if it shows a requirement, it almost makes it look like it's a permitted, a permissible thing, right? I mean, I guess, Sam, I'll defer to you as to how that works.
The idea behind the special exception, would it, it would be very simple, and allow the, theoretically, you're supposed to go to the, supposed to be go to the Board of Adjustments and file the request before you build the coop, which would give the, which would give the neighborhood and the Board of Adjustments a voice in the process.
Sure.
So the process would be, whether they were wanting to build a deck or build a coop, the process would be the same, they would follow the same channels at that point if?
Well, you don't have to ask 200 mi, 200 foot radius for.
No, it's a little bit different, Mayor, so, so let's, to put the deck on the same playing field as the chickens, the deck would have to encroach into the setback, and then it would go to the Board of Adjustment, and you would pay, you'd pay, normally you'd pay $25 for your deck permit, well, now the deck permit's on hold until you pay your $125 and go to the Board of Adjustment. And now, regarding the costs, the costs have decreased substantially for the Board of Adjustments in the last two years, because it used to be you had to pay, every, you had to pay all the certified mailings. Well, I reached out to the Iowa League of Cities, and the Iowa, and you don't have to do certified mailings for notices, but it has reduced the cost substantially to go to the Board of Adjustment. But to be clear, it's still $125 plus 25 to go to the Board of Adjustment for a chicken coop versus, you know, doing, like, a $25 permit process and changing your zoning code to have it be a permit.
Okay. Thank you. Any more, any more questions?
I guess my thought is, in the long run, I'd rather have it in black and white. Yes, you can have chickens or livestock, no, you can't have livestock, or yes, you can have it if you meet this criteria. That's the way I would rather the planning and zoning go in the long run. If you have some of these kids in 4H or FFA, and they're just trying to have a small little, whether it be duck, chicken, rabbit, project going on, and now they're gonna have to go pay a couple hundred dollars to have these animals, that might make their ability to do this no longer exist.
Well, there still needs to be oversight, and that's, I mean, that's why you have a board. I think that's the only way that we can be, that we can, you know, create any sort of exception, because at the end of the day, that's what it is, it's, we are allowing someone to violate the rule. So if we're gonna do that, we have to make sure that we, as a city, have our Ts crossed and Is dotted, and that is by having a documented process, and that documented process, it costs money. I mean, I guess there's no two ways around it, but.
Well, there's one way, leave it as is.
If we leave it as is, then we'll just say no chickens, period, and be done with it.
No, I mean, have, have them come to the city council.
No, 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 Sean, that, that's why we have the system.
And I heard the comment that was made at the council meeting about how much time this takes of Sam's time to deal with chickens, and we wanted to eliminate that.
Mm-hmm. It's gonna take the same amount of time for Sam, whether it's here or the Board of Adjustment, correct?
Hmm, I wouldn't think so.
And the challenge would be, if they want to go through the Boards of Adjustments, they know there's a cost to it, because there's a cost to it for the city to do this.
Right. I think that's the defining factor in my mind, plus the fact that there's reasons why the system is the way it is for a deck, okay? So that we have some control of what's being built and, and, and whatnot within the city limits. Same thing here. I mean, the coop's gotta come before the chickens, hopefully, okay? Can't have chickens without a coop, let's just say.
Before the egg tube.
All right, yeah. No pun intended here, but, but what I'm saying is, is that if, if they know that there's a cost, I had to go through it, I paid my $150 for a variance as well, and paid for all the mailings and everything else, that's fine, because in the end, I got what I wanted. And if chickens is what you want, then you, then you've got to process and you do it. If, if we don't go that route, then it becomes a subjective decision every time by a body that has no governing factor to, to follow. There's no, there's no governing to it. I'm not gonna be able to tell them what kind of a coop is right and not right, I'm not gonna be able to tell them where they should have the coop at on your yard, I'm not gonna make sure that they have to go out and get validated responses back from neighbors 200, you know, 200 yards away, all the way around it. All that will be taken care of with the new process, and that makes sense to me. So, so if we're going to, if, if people want to take that step to be able to do, have fowl, or whatever else, livestock in, in town, this is the best way to deal with it, in my opinion, so.
Aye, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, not to introduce another element to this, but I'm about to. One of the, one of the things that you could do is if you feel that this ordinance is premature, to start, start the readings of it, you could ask for a resolution on the next agenda that puts a moratorium on the requests, until the zoning ordinance, Planning and Zoning has given you their recommendation. That's another option, I just wanted to throw that, throw that out there, but.
I would be more in favor of getting this done and on the books, and never have to talk about a chicken coop at a city council meeting ever again. So whatever steps it takes to get that done, that's what I'm after.
And I'd like to be able to tell somebody what they need to do if they want to have a chicken.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point.
I can point them to a direction, and they can follow the process.
Yeah, and you just, yeah, more than just, well, you have to hope the, the councilmen like it.
Correct, yeah.
Which, Angie, that's nothing against you, I just wanted to clarify that.
So this, this discussion moves us to scheduling a first reading, in my mind, is that correct?
This is first reading.
This is first reading, okay?
And our options are to move it to the second, move it to the third?
I'd recommend approval, which, of first reading, which means second reading will be on October 21.
Okay.
And then when does Planning and Zoning meet again, too?
October 28.
October 28.
Is there a chance they'll have something after that meeting?
There is, Sean, but it's, it's, it's possible that the board will, Planning and Zoning will ask for a permit process rather than a special exception process, and then that will require more discussion.
I'd like to see once what the Planning and Zoning recommends before I approve a zoning ordinance, even though it's just the first reading.
Yeah, can we make adjustments after first reading?
The fundamentals of the ordinance, all you're doing is removing eight words to the ordinance.
I mean, and that is their recommendation now, not?
It is, that is their recommendation, remove those eight words from the city code, not from the zoning ordinance, but from the city code.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve first reading.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I can, I can second that.
Okay, we have.
Since it's about eight words right now, so.
Okay. So now the question becomes, these other chickens in town that have not have been approved, do we need, what's the enforcement policy on that?
It has been complaint-based, and whenever I see them.
Have you had any complaints?
Trying to, the, well, I had a report of, of chickens up on the north side of town, I have asked that individual to file a request, it hasn't been done, not sure if chickens have been removed. That was based on a report that had come through one of our emergency services departments, seen chickens. The three, the three requests that came, came for, that came through this year, the first one was based on a passerby that saw it, and they weren't complaining, they just asked what the rules were, so that triggered that one, that was for Connor McDonald. Second one on Garfield Avenue was, they were proactive and asked before they moved to town if they could have the chickens, and then in this case, an individual had called and expressed a concern, and I worked with Angie, and she's been great to work with on this, by the way, very patient. But I, Sean, I don't, haven't gone out of my way to look for the issue, I have other, other zoning issues that have been more important.
As far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't push you in that direction either at this point until we have this settled.
So we wait on a roll call now?
We have motion and second, correct? All right, then we need a roll call, yes.
Brewster.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
All right. And moving on, we have Andrew Larson, is that you sitting back there, I assume, with the mask? Your picture was part of your presentation, but it's kind of hard to tell. All right, we've been asked Andrew Johnson to step forward, he has a presentation for us regarding Urban Forest Management Plan.
Just kind of move back and forth from TV. Am I good to go?
You're good to go, you bet.
Okay. Can you hear me good now?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, okay. All right, well, like you said, my name is Andrew Larson, I work for JEO Consulting Group, and I'm an urban forester and certified arborist. I actually came to Sheldon last summer and did a visual survey of all the city trees. So you may have seen me walking up and down all the streets, looking at all the trees and in the parks. So this project is actually funded through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and I'm the private contractor that was chosen for that, for this job. There's my face. So just a little bit about JEO Consulting. So we, we have a few different services, mostly civil engineering, traffic engineering, and, and I come from the Environmental Science Department, where we mostly focus on urban forestry and wetland science.
I have one question, is this PowerPoint connected to our?
It is.
Town cloud? That way we don't have to try looking?
Yeah, we can follow along.
Is it under, I see the attachments.
It's the last attachment under.
Current, current Sheldon Tree Ordinance? That's the last ordinance I have under this.
No, the iPads don't have the updated.
Well, this one does.
It's under, it's presentation by CEO, or, excuse me, JEO Consulting.
It became linked today, Brad, so you, you might need to refresh your feed.
No.
So, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I wanted to start with, by talking about, a little bit about the objectives of the Urban Forest Management Plan. Maybe thinking, I've never really heard of this, why, why would we care? Well, first off, this is to assist Sheldon with managing the urban forest overall, so kind of giving you a good idea of what you have and what you need to take care of. It's inform on the benefits of a healthy urban forest, so many people don't know this, but urban forests actually provide a lot of benefits to a city through the different, through temperature lowering, or just taking up stormwater, just a lot of different things, also providing like property value. And then another objective is just to establish preventative treatment for Emerald Ash Bor- Ash Bore and other invasive pests and diseases. Uh, I'm sure maybe you've heard of Emerald Ash Bore, also known as EAB. Um, it's a, uh, pretty nasty pest that is ravaging through the Midwest, quite frankly. Um, and specifically Iowa's been hit very hard, uh, by Emerald Ash Bore, killing mostly all white and green ash, uh, and, um, leaving them dead. Um, and I'm going to get to the, uh, the signs and symptoms of that later on. Another objective is to develop efficient city tree management techniques, so that's, that's a tree trimming, a, a cycle for doing that, um, different ways of making sure that your trees are growing properly when they're young, when you plant them, so you don't have to spend all that money later on when they're older to try and trim them or make them, um, not in the way or danger, endangered to other people. And then, like I said, we want to mitigate public safety issues, we want, uh, part of my job was checking all of the trees to make sure that there aren't going to be big limbs that could potentially fall and damage property or hurt someone, and that's, that's another really important aspect of the plan. So again, why does it matter? I already touched on it a little bit, but Emerald Ash Bore-related issues can become extremely costly. Um, I actually sent the plan, uh, this spring to your city, um, but inside that plan, it, it, um, explains that you have 672 ash trees alone, um, that are city-owned, and that's, uh, roughly, uh, thirty-nine, so roughly forty percent of your entire, um, city tree population, um, and that could become extremely costly, um, when you do have Emerald Ash Bore coming into your city, um, because that happens within one to three years, you'll start seeing trees die once they're in, um, once they're in your city, um, so it happens quickly, it doesn't happen, you know, over ten years, so once you have it, you'll have 672 dead trees, and that can be pretty costly. Uh, two, healthy urban landscapes promote healthier communities, so the more trees you have, the better your air is, less, um, less, uh, symptoms like with having asthma or allergies, um, and then also it just cools the temperature of the air, um, and then people don't have to spend as much money on heating or cooling their homes, and then that produces less emissions, which is, again, better for the environment. And then number three, sound management, management practice can increase the environmental benefits, so if you want to see more value brought to your city, um, oftentimes urban forests can do that. So, uh, now we'll get on to what and how the data was collected. So every city-owned tree had information specific to that tree collected about it, including size, so, uh, they call it diameter at breast height, but it's basically just the, the, the size of the tree, um, species, um, health considerations of the wood and of the leaves, um, among other things, if I saw signs or symptoms of a pest or disease. Specifically, I focused on EAB signs and symptoms, and then the tree inventory was done with a GPS data collector in iTree Streets, and if you did see me, I was just basically holding an iPad walking up and down the road. So now we'll get into a few of the results of the inventory. So first off, Sheldon's trees provide 372,068 dollars of benefits annually, and before I keep going on the results, just to explain how we get this, so there's a software called iTree Streets, which is created by the USDA and the Forest Service, and that takes the approximate values that certain trees, species-specific trees provide, and it's region-specific, so this is specific to the Midwest and Upper Midwest, um, and so that is, I input all of the inventory data that I collected, and these values are created. Uh, the average of $217 per tree, there were over twenty-eight species of trees overall, and, uh, there were 1,718 city trees, um, collected throughout the entire inventory, so that's, um, the number of trees that the city is actively managing or could be actively managing. And then the most common tree genre were ash at thirty-nine percent, maple at thirty-three percent, and locust at four percent. Um, and one thing I wanted to touch on with the common tree genre, so we combined a couple of the different species of, um, ash, so white and green ash, um, so that's why that number's a little bit higher, uh, and then maple, um, at thirty-three percent, that includes things like norway maple, silver maple, red maple, um, but again, all of those maples would be susceptible to the same sorts of pests and diseases, so, um, that's why we like to highlight that. One thing that is a little bit troubling, um, with these numbers, um, just to be frank, is that, um, you know, if, uh, pest or disease were to come through, that's genre-specific, like Emerald Ash Bore is, um, you could lose up to forty percent of those trees that you manage, and then, uh, six percent of trees, uh, need some sort of management, whether that's pruning or just evaluation every year. Okay, now we'll get into some Emerald Ash Bore signs and symptoms. So Emerald Ash Bore, uh, can, uh, show canopy dieback, so if you're looking at the top of the tree and there's bare branches, um, during the growing season, it'll start to work its way down the tree, that's typical, um, bark splitting is exactly what it sounds like, it just splits along the stem of the tree and bark is starting to slough off the side. Um, and then growth of water sprouts, so water sprouts, also known as epicormic shoots, um, are basically just limbs that are growing out of a strange part of the tree that they normally wouldn't, they're growing usually straight up, and they don't have any other limbs, they just kind of are shooting out, and that's the tree's way of saying, I'm stressed, I'm trying to survive, but I'm struggling, and that's usually a really good sign that Emerald Ash Bore is within the tree. Um, one really great way is to know, to know if you have an Emerald Ash Bore infestation, um, you'll see D-shaped exit holes in the tree, and you can see that here, it's just a capital D-shaped hole, um, and that's where the, um, the adult is burrowing into the side of the tree, um, to lay its eggs. And then you may have leaf feeding in early summer, so the Emerald Ash Bore eggs hatch in late spring, early summer, and then those, um, adults are feeding within the tree, and then eventually they come out, and, um, then they do feed on the leaves, and that would be in early summer, so not right now or even midsummer, uh, because that could be other insects, but this picture, you can see, um, there's some, some, uh, evidence of leaf feeding, and then S-shaped galleries beneath the bark, so if you have ever seen an EAB-infested tree, it, without the bark, there's a lot of, um, curly Q S-shaped tunnels in the wood, and that's the S-shaped galleries where the maturing, um, insects are growing. And then, uh, obviously I think the best way to know if you have Emerald Ash Bore is to actually see an Emerald Ash Bore, um, and it's, it's pretty unmistakable, it's, uh, metallic green, about quarter-sized, and, um, it's, you know, again, it, you, you can't really mistake it once you see it, there's not many other insects that look like that, that are in the United States. Okay, um, before I get into the management needs, are there any questions right now? I'd be happy to answer at the end as well, but I've gone through a lot, so...
Is there a way to, uh, fight the EAB? If we do have it, or?
Yeah, so, there's two ways that you can go about handling an Emerald Ash Bore infestation. One, you could treat your trees, but that wears off after about a one, or one to two years, so you'd have to re-treat your trees, um, and so that can become pretty costly, especially considering you have 672 ash trees. Now, that could be valuable if in like a park setting, or you have certain trees that are kind of isolated from other ash trees, so yes, you could treat them, there are treatments for ash trees, um, but then the other, um, suggestion that I generally go with, um, for cities, um, primarily for some smaller cities that maybe don't have the, um, the staff to handle a lot of dead trees, is to go about removing and replacing now, before you have an infestation, um, because it is inevitable, uh, at this point here in Iowa. Uh, so, yeah, either you could treat the pest, um, um, or you could start proactively removing the ash trees and replacing them with other species, so those are two, two of the options, or you can just leave them and wait for them to die.
So is it your opinion, at some point, all these trees will be?
Yes, that is my opinion, they will be dead, yes. It, it could take a few years, um, but they already are in Iowa, I did not check the up-to-date, um, quarantine zone for Sheldon, um, but pretty much the entire state is under a EAB quarantine zone, so, um, they travel through firewood, through lumber, through basically cars, they are, people removing, uh, debris and brush, not sure if you had any derecho damage around the area, um, like there was back home, but, you know, moving brush, or, um, you know, taking things to a burn pile or something, that's how it spreads, so it, it spreads pretty easily, um, and so, and yeah, in my professional opinion, it, it will happen eventually, probably within the next ten years, I would say, so, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, uh, so now we'll get into some of the management needs, um, so really, a lot of your trees are really healthy, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, they're mostly, um, there, a, a lot of your trees are in the, the middle-aged section, they're not very young, and they're not super old, a lot of them are very middle-aged, which is good because they're going to be healthier, that's kind of the prime of their life, so they're structurally sound, they're not as susceptible to diseases or pests, uh, and so that's why you're s- not going to see a lot of suggestions, um, because a lot of the trees look like they're being managed in some sort of way, whether that was when they were younger, so they're just growing well now, or, um, someone from the city is actively managing them, trimming, uh, so, uh, we did have a suggestion for checking out, um, pests or disease on eighty-eight of your trees, and in the actual management plan, um, which I'm not sure where that's gone around in the city, but it does look like this, and I can pass this around if you'd like to look at it. Okay, okay. Um, and there's a map in the back section that you can actually see, um, where those trees are located throughout the city, um, let's see, and, and really, I'm just suggesting that you go and evaluate each of those trees to see if there's some sort of action that needs to be taken, um, in the next growing season, uh, not necessarily that you need to treat, or that you need to remove, anything like that, but that you need to evaluate and see, sometimes season to season, trees change, leaves look bad, and then the next year they're better, so, um, that's why I'm suggesting that. Um, I'm suggesting the removal of six trees, and at this point, we're about a year past when I did the inventory, you may have removed some of these trees already, uh, but these trees were, um, in poor condition, had, um, either rotting in the middle or very dangerous limbs, um, not looking well, and that map can also be located at the back of the management plan. And then, uh, I'm not suggesting any crown reduction, but I did want to go over, um, just what a few of these things were, um, in the case of you do see a tree and you are maybe wanting to have this done, so crown reduction basically is when you have a really heavy canopy, and you want to remove some of the outside branches, this could be if there's a house growing up right next to the tree, or there's a power line, and you really just want to shrink the size of the canopy down, and, um, the tree will send shoots back out and start to grow again, depending on the species, it could form weird, actually, but, um, overall, crown reduction is really just shrinking the size of the canopy. And then crown cleaning, so crown cleaning, um, that's what I see most often, in all the towns I've been to in Iowa, there are a lot of them are like older sugar or silver maples, they have a lot of big, heavy branches, and they're really thick canopies, and when we get s- the snowstorms that we sometimes get in Iowa, or the ice storms, that collects on those branches, and they become really heavy and can break a lot, so I sometimes suggest to cities, you know, if you're seeing a really dense canopy, and you don't want to have to be trimming those trees or picking up limbs all the time, go out and take some of those branches throughout the tree canopy now, and just kind of lighten the canopy total, um, that'll also prevent a lot of diseases or funguses that develop in trees, um, because wind and airflow can get through the tree canopy. And then tree staking, pretty straightforward, everyone's probably seen a tree be staked somewhere, um, there's a couple different ways to do it, uh, each way has its pros and cons, um, but yes, that's staking, and then crown raising, crown raising is just for younger trees, when they're starting to develop, especially along streets, you don't want branches in the way hitting your car, so you want to raise that canopy up so that those branches are out of the way, and that can happen as the tree is maturing, so as, if you do have younger trees in the right-of-way along your streets, um, one thing I might recommend is that, you know, you go out every year and maybe trim a couple of those branches up, they're still going to keep maturing, um, but that's ensuring that it's going to have a really smooth, um, stem when it's older, and then it won't look ugly, it'll look really clean, and it'll be, the branches will be out of the way when it's matured. Okay, any questions after that? Okay, so, annual benefits, I think this is one of the most important and really cool, um, parts of the, the management plan and the tree inventory, so this is sh- telling you what your trees provide you. So first off, your city's trees produce energy-related costs by roughly $94,543, and again, these, these estimate, cost estimates are produced by the iTree Streets modeling, um, and that's really done through the production of wind and the lowering of air temperatures through creating shade, and then you don't have to use as much energy to heat or cool your homes, that's one of the biggest reasons that you would see that. Stormwater, so your city's trees intercept about 5,101,000 gallons of water, and they provide roughly $138,254 in benefit. I really like to point out this number, so that's, um, that number comes from when, when you have a rain event and, um, you have trees that are over pavement, your cities, your trees are collecting that rainwater or slowing its movement, instead of it just hitting the pavement and going straight to the, um, stormwater sys- management system that you have, the drainage ditch, or, um, just a ditch along the road, uh, so they're slowing that water speed, and then there's not going to be as much erosion, and then you won't have to spend as much money on, um, maintenance and upkeep for your stormwater management system. So air quality, your city's trees remove 5,848 pounds of air pollution, and that has a net value of around $16,519. Carbon, your city's trees sequester around 1 million pounds of carbon, and that has a value of around $8,872, and then your city's trees store around 18,916,000 pounds of carbon, and that has a value of around $141,873. I think that's a really, really cool, um, value, um, just how the trees absorb the carbon through the process of photosynthesis, and then they just, they make the, the atmosphere cleaner, and then that, um, reduces the heating of the earth and the surface of the earth. And then aesthetics, your city's trees, um, provide around $109,435 in social benefits, so social benefits are sort of hard to capture, but think of it along these lines, property value, uh, you know, if people are coming to visit your city, thinking about moving here, and they see a park full of trees, they're going to be, and then they go visit another city that has a park with no trees, or no trees along the streets, they're probably going to be more likely to pick your city, because trees have some intrinsic value to people, it also has been proven that in cities, uh, the existence of more trees reduces mental illness, crime rates, um, just to have the access to certain green space, um, so yeah, those are the annual benefits of your trees. And then here are some recommendations, so these are, um, recommendations based off of the data, I'll go ahead and just put all of them on here. So, like I said, six trees need removal, 22 of the 672 ash trees, uh, should be carefully examined, uh, as I thought they may have shown some sort of sign or symptom of Emerald Ash Bore, most likely either the, uh, the epicormic shoots coming out of the side of the tree, or, um, the canopy dieback at the top of the tree. Also recommending that you have a, um, pruning rotation for all of your city's trees, especially trees in, um, the right-of-way along streets. Really going to, um, suggest an increase in plant diversity among the planted trees, so any new trees that you plant, um, avoiding some maple and avoiding, obviously, ash trees, um, but really focusing on increasing that diversity, and then, um, visually surveying all the ash trees... And then, visually surveying all the ash trees, just to make sure that you're not working with EAB infestation. And then, based off of some estimations, with the current budget, it could take around 45 years to remove the ash, and that's just year by year. And we would suggest, and again, this is a very loose suggestion, not really founded on anything other than math, that we would suggest a budget increase to $12,000 annually and apply for grants for replacement trees, which the Iowa DNR and the state does provide lots of funding and resources for free trees for cities, especially right now after the derecho. Even if you don't have damage, the Iowa DNR is providing resources for trees for cities. And then, this is sort of linked to the last thing. This is a proposed work schedule and budget. So this is connected to my recommendations for starting to remove ash trees. And again, totally just a suggestion, based off of what I've seen that works with handling ash tree maintenance or removal. Being proactive and starting to remove them now is typically going to have you be money ahead in the long run. So, in year one of a six-year plan, I would suggest removing six trees, the six trees that I had recommended earlier that need removal, because they're could be dangerous. And then, removing six ash trees and planting 13 trees in their place. And a really good thing to keep in mind is, for every one tree that you replace, or that you cut down, you replace it with one and a half trees. And that's just a little math trick that I like to suggest, so that you're always going to have more at the end than you started with. And then, in year two, removing two ash trees and planting two trees in their place, and then, starting a pruning cycle. So, what some cities do is they break up their city into sections, or I'm sure there's quadrants, or something that, some way that you've broken up your city, and you can go on a biannual pruning rotation, where you're pruning all the trees in this area of the city, and then, two years later, you're planning, you're pruning these trees in this area of the city. And that just helps spread out the work, and that way, you know that those trees are going to continue to be monitored and maintained. And then, year three, we would suggest removing 12 ash trees and planting 13 trees in their place. And then, the cycle's really just repeating in year four, five, six. So, that was a lot of information. Do you have any questions or comments?
The trees that you assessed, those were in the parking or in public grounds, not on?
Correct. None of these trees were in, on private property. They were all in right-of-way, or in the parking, or in actual parks, or city-owned land.
Do you think the city has a adequate number of trees, or needs more?
Your city had the largest amount of trees out of any city that I inventoried last summer, and I thought it was actually a quite good number. The only thing that would be concerning is obviously that nearly half of them were ash trees. So, that would be the only thing that would concern me. Otherwise, having 1,700, nearly 1,800 trees is a really, really good thing. That's, for a city your size, I would say that's a, a pretty good number.
Andrew, can you advise the ordinance?
Yeah. So I'll just give a couple comments. Nothing crazy. But, one thing that, and obviously, I don't know what sort of suggestions you're looking for or comments, but this is a pretty basic ordinance for city trees, and, let me go back to it so I can read from it a little bit here. So, the one place that, oh, that's not even it. Okay, it's the next. The one place that I like to look at first is the prohibited trees. So, right now, that's on 151.02 planting restrictions. Planting restrictions is usually the first place I look for city tree ordinances. So, the alignment and spacing, that information's all good. The number .3 prohibited trees, I agree with all of those trees that are on that list, but I would obviously include ash, definitely on that list. And, just a comment, not necessarily an advising comment, really, but some cities have seen success. If you do, since you do have a lot of ash trees that are, eventually, not saying you're going to remove them now, but eventually, they may be lost, what some cities have done, in Iowa specifically, is they've created an ordinance where they are still wanting trees in the parking, in the right-of-way, because street trees really do the most good, because they cover the pavement and add property value. But, they're being a little bit more restrictive on how that is done, how people can go about planting those. And so, one thing that a lot of cities do, or have done in the past few years, is they put a restriction, or a ban is a very strong word, but a ban, for lack of better words, on planting unless they go through a suggested tree species list that is advised by the city and city council, according to the data from your city tree inventory. I think that using the science and the data that has been collected for your city to basically manage and control what's being planted in your city could be helpful. Not saying that has to be done, I'm just saying that that could be helpful in the future management of your city, just kind of advising on what can be planted, instead of advising on what shouldn't be planted. Because obviously, people are probably going to follow those rules anyways, but maybe not. So, that's the only real comment I had on the ordinance, but if anyone had any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Andrew, Andrew, this is Todd, Public Works Director.
Yes.
Would it, would it make some sense for you to sit down with myself and maybe some other city staff and go over this in greater detail, and then come back with a series of recommendations for council to consider at a later date?
Yeah, that would be fine. Yeah.
I just think there's a greater discussion that needs to happen on some of this, and it's likely not something we're going to be able to get through in a city council meeting, say.
Absolutely, yeah. And of course, I'd be happy to talk with anyone about that. Those were just some ideas that I had for future guidance, so, yep. Any other questions? If not, I'll just, I think you already have my contact info in the packet, but feel free to reach out if you guys do have more questions, and it sounds like maybe we will be speaking here again in the future. So, thank you for your time.
And thank you, Andrew, for joining us today, presenting that information. One of those things we kind of take for granted, I think, but something I think we need to consider for future planning, especially in light of the emerald ash borer. All right, moving forward here to our city manager report, is there anything else you'd like to add, Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. My report speaks for itself. I just wanted to say thank you to Andrew and also to Iowa DNR for this grant-funded study that they did for us. And it's a painful topic, because we hate to lose our trees, but it's a discussion that we need to have, and this is the beginning of it. Thank you.
All right. Kurt, are you still here?
I am.
Anything you have to share?
Thank you.
Okay. Todd, how about you?
Oh, thank you.
Micah?
Thank you.
Scott? Moving right along. Angie?
Yes.
Councilman to my left?
I do. I think the city of Sheldon and the city council needs to say a thank you to the Mark Mathis family for allowing him to serve 39 years on the Sheldon Fire Company. Put many hours into that, and it's been greatly appreciated by the city and the citizens of Sheldon.
He'll be sorely missed.
So I'd like to have that in official records, a thank you to Mark Mathis.
All right. Sean, anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman to my right?
I'm fine, thank you.
Pete, anything you have to share?
Oh, thank you.
All right. The only comment I have, Kent is sitting here today, went by the site that's been cleaned up next to his building there. It's looking great. We're making progress.
Thank you.
So, thank you for partnering with us on that and getting that to happen. And the thermal cell building, the fences are set up, and bee hive has been discovered. Just found that out today, but activity's taking place there, too, so we are making progress, albeit slow, it's happening, so it's good to see.
And if we have to have any more discussions about bees, like we do about chickens, you may have my resignation.
All right.
Now that'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Ken?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Farah Hatta?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.[1789.53]